Okay, thank you so much. So it's time to call to the order. Any council announcement? Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, councillor Silvies.
Thank you, Mr. Che. Good morning, everybody who's with us in chambers today and watching us online. My announcement today is referencing the very successful Terry Fox run that we had last Sunday. Glamina Betancourt is with us today in council chambers. She is the chair of our organizing committee, and she has done this for forty-five years. And publicly, I want to say thank you, Glamina, for everything that you do with regards to Terry Fox. It is remarkable. And just this particular run alone, just by the Richmond Hill Oakridges group, we raised over fifty-five thousand dollars. And it's my understanding that the Terry Fox Foundation's money raised through these runs now has gone over a billion dollars. That's with a B, which is remarkable because, yeah, remarkable because what that does is that it helps so many people either fight cancer or become free of cancer at some point. So everybody knows at least one person in their lives who has cancer or has had cancer. So the Terry Fox Foundation has done remarkable work with regards to finding ways and means to help people who do have cancer and to help them either live longer lives or live periodically, period. So I just want to thank, I want to thank Glamina and our organizing committee, of which I am part very proudly, for all the work that was done to bring such a successful run on Sunday and also to our staff at operations and events, who helped us with everything else regarding this particular run. So thank you to all from myself on behalf of the organizing committee. And Glamina, we look forward to next year. I suppose you're already busy. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. This has been a real busy weekend. And thank you to everybody and to council members who showed up at so many of the events and helped the community to celebrate the different events that were happening. I just wanted to concentrate on one thing, Noah. And actually, before I say that, I do want to say thank you to all the organizers, Glamina and your crew, for the Terry Fox Run. That is an amazing event. And it was really great to have a couple of members of the Fox family, you know, visiting Richmond Hill over the last few months, and that was also a real nice bonus. I just want to give a shout out to the folks in the Skywood Drive area and all the residents and neighbors that showed up for the vigil that we had, I guess, the day before yesterday, for the victims of that horrible fire that we had on Skywood. And I'd also like to thank the traumatic incidents response protocol people from the region for the good work that they did in helping to put that vigil on. It was a really great event in the sense that it really brought the community out and in large numbers to pay tribute to the two young ladies that passed in that horrible fire, but also just to support the rest of the community. So thank you very much for that. And again, I just wanted to also thank the York Regional Police that came out, a number of different members and fairly high-ranking folks that came out from York Regional Police, our very own Fire Chief, Chief Burbage, and a number of the crew from the local fire station that actually responded to that horrible incident were also there. So thank you very much to everybody that participated in that. It is something that makes me very proud as mayor to see the community coming together in such a compassionate and empathetic way without hardly any prompting or whatever. I mean, they just showed up. And, you know, I think it really is a testament to the strength and the resilience and the quality of our community here in Richmond Hill. And I'm very pleased that we were able to support the family and the community in that way. So thanks very much.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you very much through you, the chair. Just, it's never too early to start promoting the Eco Family Fest, which is happening over at Elgin Barrow and Town Park on October the fourth. It was quite the event last year. This year, we are bringing in a few other things of interest, such as the Earthly Brothers, who will be onsite collecting used electronics. So if you have some of your old tablets, phones, laptops, things like that, they will take those, they will scrub them, they will get them refurbished and repurposed. So make sure that if you have any of those, come on out. Also, the Richmond Hill Lions Club will also be picking up used prescription glasses, things like that. And again, finding a way to repurpose those to those that would need those. Also, we'll be collecting non-perishable food items for the Richmond Hill Food Bank. So, you know, I'm thinking that these are all the things that are available to you. And this will be basically a free event. We have a free barbecue, which will have the plant-based protein burgers from Beyond Meat. If you've never tried them, you're going to be duly surprised. I did not tell anybody at last year's event when I served them, they're going, no, that was a regular beef burger. And I go, and it was not. So come on out, check it out. It's a good idea to pre-register because I only have a thousand burgers. So, you know, it's while supplies last, so pre-register and you will be sure to get a burger coupon. Okay, and that's October the fourth. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so I'm the last one. So I do have a few announcements. So in Wardford, in the past two weeks, we experienced two tragedies. One is being mentioned by Mayor, one of the family, you know, got the arson issues. So we hold our vigil on Monday night at the French Ollies Park. Also, another one is in daycare. So we have one kid, one kid is killed already. So there is another one still in a very serious condition. So please express my kind of license on behalf of the residents and the neighbors and also to the families and also to the loved ones who are suffering from those two tragedies. Yes, I think today we're going to addressing a while another issues for daycare centers as well. So Mayor is going to put a motion later on. So that's the one maybe announcement. The second one is for last week, Saturday, we host one of the Food Bank Drive in Wardford. So thank you for your generositys. Also, thank you for Mayor and also Scott Thompson, who were two councillors come here to support us also for the contribution. So we got collected around forty boxes of food. And yesterday, we delivered to the Food Bank Drive. Thank you so much for your generosity. That's from my part. Anyone else? Okay. So next one, introduced emergency and time-sensitive matters. Okay, Mayor West.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a motion that I've circulated to members of council regarding the tragedy that we had at the daycare center the other day. And I do recognize that this doesn't maybe entirely match the precise definition of emergency and time-sensitive matter. But I think it's really important that we be able to introduce this quickly. And this is the first opportunity to do so. Because I think we need to be doing everything that we have in our power to support the proposed measures that are being suggested by the province. So I would ask for your support in, at this time, in just allowing it to be put on the agenda. And then we can deal with the details of the motion at that time if the addition to the agenda is successful.
Do we need a motion put forward? Okay, perfect. Okay, so next item, adoption.
Yeah, we need to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Either you need to, sorry, Mr. Chair, ask if there's a discussion, and then if not, call for a vote.
Okay, is there any discussions? Anyone want to put forward anything? Okay, no. So we want the vote. Okay, can I? Okay, any objections? All in favor? Okay. All in favor. The motion was passed unanimously. So next item is going to be adoption of agenda. Any objections? Any movers as well? Do we need a mover? Please, anyone want to move this agendas? Okay, Mayor West. Okay, adoption of the agenda passed. All in favor? Yeah, unanimous, passed. The next one is disclosure of particulars in case of general nature thereof. Anyone has anything to claim? Nope. Okay, the motion passes as well. Next item, identification items requiring separate discussion. Anyone want to extract agendas? Okay, councillor Silvies.
Thank you, Mr. Che. Eleven point seven Norfolk developments.
Sorry, councillor, which item?
Eleven point seven Norfolk development.
Okay, I believe eleven point five, eleven point seven and eleven point eight is the extract automatically. We have three items here. So so adoption, the remaining of agenda items except eleven point, ten point seven, eleven point five and eleven point eight extracted. All remaining one will have agreement, right? So let me see this one. Adoption, a reminder of agenda items. All in favor? Okay, okay, thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. Government chairman moved the motion. Any objections or all in favor? Okay, the motion passed unanimously. Next item is going to be public hearings. So we have no public hearing today. We do have one presentation. So nine point one, presentation by Frank Supa, director of our instructor, planning and development engineer, and also Adam Rosenfield regarding to the micro mobility strategy.
And then through the chair, morning, Mayor West and members of committee. I'm pleased to be standing here to introduce the city of Richmond Hill's proposed micro mobility strategy for your consideration. The strategy, which was outlined in the 2023 Transportation Master Plan, will provide guidance on the deployment, regulation, and planning of micro mobility in Richmond Hill as we take steps towards assessing benefits, risks, and considerations around the integration of micro mobility in the city. Staff have been working diligently over the last two years with our consultants to ensure an in-depth level of stakeholder consultation has taken place to promote consistency as we adapt to provincial pilot programs, which provide the framework to manage the regulatory gap related to the personal and future shared use of micro mobility devices. While community members and partners generally support expanding mobility options, education, safety, and regulatory enforcement remained at the forefront of the feedback that we received. Today, we have present with us Adam Rosenfield from WSP, who will take us through the presentation and provide us answers to any of the questions along with support from city staff. I'll now turn things over to Adam. Thank you.
Through the chair, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council or members of committee. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of WSP, a consulting firm retained by the city to prepare the micro mobility strategy for Richmond Hill that we'll be discussing this morning. This was a strategy developed in part by WSP in partnership with Stuckless Consulting, which joined us for a robust round of public engagement, stakeholder consultation, and the details of which we will get through in this presentation. Okay, so as for our agenda this morning, I want to take us briefly through an overview of the project and the timelines, give a brief primer on what is micro mobility, what are we discussing here? Some opportunities and challenges associated with micro mobility, the broader policy context in which this strategy was created, the proposed recommendations that are outlined in detail in the report to committee along with a proposed implementation timeline should this matter go forward. And we'll wrap up with some next steps. As a brief overview of the project, the objective here was to develop a strategy to help the city regulate micro mobility and sidewalk cycling. And I'll define micro mobility in a moment, but in a nutshell, we're talking things like e-bikes, e-scooters, sort of person-sized, e-powered mobility devices, as well as the topic of sidewalk cycling itself. The strategy aimed to help understand the benefits and risks to micro mobility adoption in Richmond Hill and consider how to address key issues like safety concerns, education, maintenance, in particular winter maintenance, and liability matters for the city. As for the project timeline, it initiated in 2024, in mid-year with initial background review and looking at what other municipalities, other jurisdictions are doing in this space as it has been a rapidly evolving space with technology improvements and regulatory matters being taken by cities and jurisdictions across Canada. We undertook public and stakeholder consultation, that I'll speak to in a moment, and developed a series of operational policies and bylaw frameworks that are part of the proposed strategy itself. We're now at the step of going to council in September 2025 and some steps that will be taken should this matter go forward into next year in 2027. But first, what are we actually discussing? So what is micro mobility? Well, in a nutshell, it is an umbrella term for various forms of low-speed, lightweight wheeled mobility devices, most often electrified. We talk of them often as electric bicycles or e-bikes, as well as kickstyle electric scooters or e-scooters. And as you'll see on the images here, there is a wide gamut of devices that sometimes fall under the umbrella of micro mobility. As a quick caveat, when we're talking about wheelchairs, mobility scooters, devices for accessibility needs, from a regulatory standpoint, these users are treated as pedestrians and would be considered as a different matter to today's discussion. And just another point of sort of definitions, there is micro mobility in general, which is, you know, using one of these devices. And then there's shared micro mobility, which refers to services that provide shared public access to these devices, such as bike share, scooter share, these programs that we're seeing in neighboring municipalities. So a quick rundown of what we see on the slide here. On the left, we're seeing everything from a pedal-assisted e-bike to a power-assisted e-bike, which means an e-bike with a throttle. So either you have to pedal to make it move or some devices, you can use a throttle to make it accelerate on its own. And then you sort of rise up the tier of device types to more heavier, higher-powered devices like moped-style e-bikes, motorcycle-style e-bikes, and even gas-powered low-speed motorcycles. So as you'll see here, there's a spectrum. There's such things as cargo e-bikes that are in increasing adoption as well. There's, of course, the kickstyle e-scooter. And then there's another set of devices that are in that more nascent stage of things like electric skateboards, hoverboards, unicycles, a very sort of broad array of new devices there. And then finally, we get into the more heavier, faster, more powered devices like low-speed vehicles, golf carts, urban mobility vehicles that stretch more to almost like the personal vehicle type of device. So I just wanted to lay that out there so that when we're talking about these different devices and why we're proposing certain bylaw elements, which types of devices we're referring to. So that's the what is micro mobility, but really, why are we talking about this today at all? When it comes to opportunities, there are many. From the first perspective of broadening the choice of how people can choose to get around Richmond Hill, micro mobility presents a series of offerings that could be low-cost, quite accessible to the broader public. It supports climate change goals as a low-carbon form of mobility. And it can unlock shared mobility as well. So not just private ownership of devices, but in jurisdictions where we have shared programs, it obviates the need for owning a personal device and can unlock those options for a broader swath of the public. It can increase access to opportunities, to jobs, to community services for those that either are choosing a different mode of transportation from driving or who would like to take public transit but need that connection to public transit, which ties into that kind of first and last mile connectivity piece. And we'll talk about, you know, the opportunities that are coming along with the Young North subway extension, increased ridership on the GO network. There is a huge opportunity to leverage micro mobility as that first last mile connection to these core transit routes that connect Richmond Hill to the broader region. And then finally, it promotes frankly, a fun mode of transportation. There is a joy that we hear from people that use these devices, that get out and get active transportation exercise and time in the outdoors, and I don't want to discount that. On the flip side, there are challenges that can be faced when it comes to micro mobility adoption. From an accessibility standpoint, we've heard of concerns about devices being left on sidewalks, blocking rights of way. That is an area where we're seeing market improvements with greater technology and regulatory processes to ensure compliance with both social norms and regulations at large. We see challenges around speed and shared spaces when it comes to trails, sidewalks, multi-use paths. There are challenges around maintenance. Do we have, you know, a network of safe places to ride? Particularly around winter maintenance can be a matter of concern. There is insurance and liability, especially for these larger, more higher-powered devices. And municipalities have addressed these liability concerns in different ways. And then finally, device safety, of course, is paramount. So there have been reports, especially for imported devices that don't meet Canadian regulations around concerns about battery fires and safety there. And of course, safety for the riders. And there is a whole sort of series of actions that can be taken to ensure rider safety and safety of those around riders. So when developing the strategy, we reviewed a policy context of a number of documents and reports, guidelines, policies in Richmond Hill and the region at large, reviewing the official plan, the 2023 update of the Transportation Master Plan, which is a core linkage in terms of the network development of safe places to ride. There's, of course, the Community Energy and Emissions Plan that relates to the climate aspect of this. There is the Richmond Hill Age Friendly Community Strategy and, of course, broader regional priorities, such as the Young North subway extension, which will be bringing the subway to Richmond Hill. So what we heard through our consultation was a wide range of opinions. Overall, we'll talk about what we heard in a moment, but just who do we talk to? We did two rounds of public information centers, four events in total, both in-person, virtual, and hybrid. We did an online public survey with close to 500 respondents, giving us a really nice cross-section of views. We conducted interviews with neighboring jurisdictions operators, speaking with Markham, Vaughan, the region, Mississauga, talking to operators that are currently in the space. City staff led a series of interviews with other municipalities as well. We led a workshop with city staff. We had two advisory, accessibility advisory committee presentations and a road watch committee presentation. So what did we hear through some of these events? Well, for one thing, there was concern about people riding on the sidewalk, wanting more regulation, communication, and most importantly, safe alternative spaces to ride. Though when people are using sidewalks, it's usually because they fear for their safety if they're not using that facility. And there is a sort of reasonable expectation that the city will be building out through its Transportation Master Plan more safe places to ride in the coming years. There were questions around enforcement and education on the rules of the road. Best practices do vary across municipalities. Facility maintenance, both year-round in terms of pavement quality, potholes, smoothness of facilities, and of course, winter maintenance was a question that came up. Accessibility was a concern, and people with disabilities were reported to be less supportive of these shared programs based on early kind of media reports and lived experiences. But again, more openness to these newer programs that have addressed some of the early concerns around accessibility. There were talks of ideal parking solutions for shared micro mobility that are still being tested. So we have docked systems like we see in Toronto with the docked bike share. There's dockless where devices can either be directed to be locked to a traditional bike rack or put in a zone where these devices are meant to be parked. And this is still an evolving policy landscape. There is improving data tracking of collisions and incidents. It's limited right now, but we spoke with Mackenzie Health, and there is increasing data on, you know, who's getting injured by these devices. How can we improve the safety outcomes through rules and the technology and the infrastructure itself? There are different best practices when it comes to financial models for shared micro mobility. And finally, looking at e-scooters and e-bikes, that tends to be the priority when we're talking about micro mobility today. So that's going to be kind of my focus as I go through the presentation. And it's been the focus through the strategy. But we also deal with the broader range of devices that I mentioned, and I'll take us through those in a moment. When it comes to current practice across municipalities, there is, again, a spectrum. On the left here, we see some are opting out of the provincial e-scooter pilot right now, such as the city of Toronto citing their shared micro mobility program, which is Toronto Bike Share. Other cities have opted into the pilot for personal use devices, but haven't chosen to do a shared system yet. Pickering an example of that. And then some have opted into the e-scooter pilot at the provincial level and have chosen to go forward with a shared system, and we're seeing that across the province, including in our backyard here, Vaughan, Markham, Brampton, Oshawa, Ottawa, et cetera. E-bikes are already legal across Ontario. Some municipalities have been running shared programs as well. And when it comes to municipal harmonization, city staff are engaging with Vaughan and Markham and the region to promote consistency among regulations. So let's talk about what these recommendations actually look like. So when it comes to kickstyle e-scooters, right now, they're not currently permitted in Richmond Hill. And this strategy and proposed bylaw puts forward that they would be permitted in the following places. On-road, on-road cycling facilities, in boulevard cycling facilities, so multi-use paths above the curb, as well as potentially off-road trails, but not at this current moment because the trails' level of service study is pending completion, and this would come back to committee at a later date. So right now, we're just talking about the sort of on-road and in-the-bike paths and on-road cycling facilities. These would not be permitted on sidewalks in any scenario. Bicycles already permitted. The only piece that's being put forward in addition is around sidewalks. Right now, Richmond Hill does not have a bylaw around cycling on the sidewalks. And this bylaw would put forward that riding on the sidewalks is not allowed except for children under the age of fourteen would be allowed to ride on sidewalks, consistent with other jurisdictions, Toronto and others more broadly. For e-bikes, no change is contemplated as they're already permitted. For pedal-assisted e-bikes, for power-assisted e-bikes, again, the ones that have throttle assist, again, no change contemplated at this point. The trails' level of service study will come forward with recommendations for that. And those motor-assisted bicycles, mopeds, motorcycles, all that and beyond, again, not being contemplated on anything else other than the status quo, which is allowed on-road. So just to go through a bit more detail here, for e-scooters for personal use, the recommendation is to adopt the micro mobility bylaw to allow participation in the provincial e-scooter pilot for personal use e-scooters, consistent with neighboring jurisdictions. Some considerations include specifying where e-scooters are permitted, can be parked. And we'll talk about education that can be put forward to help ensure folks understand, you know, where to park these things, not to block pedestrian or vehicle movement. For paved off-road trails, the current permissions are that bicycles and pedal-assisted e-bikes are allowed. And as mentioned, the trails' level of service study would contemplate expanding this to parks. When it comes to education and enforcement, what's being recommended is a robust three-phase education and awareness program. So the first phase, being in the very short term, an education campaign focused on personal use through updates to the Richmond Hill website, social media, newsletters, digital ads, really get the word out on creating that social norm of what kind of behavior is expected of users and what's permitted, what's not. The second phase is more community-led programs through partnerships, engaging the school boards, the police, libraries, road watch, potential vendors, looking at sort of that community-led focus. And then the third phase, should the city go forward with a shared program in the future, would be leveraging those vendors who have put forward very effective education campaigns in other jurisdictions to really focus on what a shared program usage and expectations and norms and safety protocols would be. And then so when it comes to that shared program itself, the recommendation is to And then so when it comes to that shared program itself, the recommendation is to plan for a shared pilot program with private vendors, not to be put forward for committee consideration today, but in the future, into next year, for launch in 2027. And some considerations, again, looking at clutter avoidance, preserving accessibility, using technology tools like geofencing to ensure that scooters cannot be ridden in places where there may be safety concerns around parks, sidewalks. There is improving technology in that regard to ensure that that is brought into place, aiming to ensure a sort of a balance of e-scooters, e-bikes. Depending on public preference, we heard through consultation, there was a slight preference for e-bikes over e-scooters, but almost 50/50. And yeah, exploring collaboration with neighboring municipalities, so we don't have, you know, a patchwork of rules across municipal boundaries. Last couple of slides here. So proposed implementation timeline. We're here in 2025 at the council meeting. Should this go forward, we'll be looking at that education campaign launching later in the year into next year. This would include opting into the provincial pilot through MTO and updating the traffic bylaw, introducing the new bylaw that's under consideration today. Into next year, that Phase Two education campaign would take place. The Trails level of service study will take place where future recommendations will come forward for the park system. And into 2027, we'd be looking at launching potentially a public shared service pilot along with that education campaign. So that's a favorable information. Just the next steps here will be considering the active transportation and micro mobility bylaw that's attached to today's agenda, opting into the provincial e-scooter program should this go forward, and again, launching that education awareness campaign. So with that, I'll finish my presentation and happy to take questions. And city staff here are happy to take questions as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so I'm not sure, should we question now or wait later? Okay, question, okay.
Thank you to the chair. So it would be appropriate at this time for committee to be allowed to ask questions about the presentation. We'll deal with the actual agenda item later in the meeting after we've heard from the delegates on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So any questions? Okay, Mr. Mayor, go first. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I have a bunch of things that I will be saying at various points in this meeting about the micro mobility strategy. But I'm just trying to concentrate just on questions about the presentation. Can we, can I just have your comments? Or and if this is better to deal with when we deal with the actual agenda item, I'm happy to hear it at that time, but I think it's appropriate now. Can we expand a little bit more on what are, and I get that we may not have the plans finalized, but the general plan for enforcement, once this, you know, the education phase is finished and we're ready to roll, what is the enforcement environment look like here? Because I can imagine that this will be difficult to, for us to enforce it at the level that residents who, you know, might have had what they perceive as a close call with another mobility device feel is necessary. And I want to, I don't want to set us up here where, you know, the perception is that we're not able to enforce this. So can we get some comments on that? And again, I understand that it's not necessarily fully baked, but if there's anything that you can share at this point.
Sure, thank you. And through the chair, Mr. Mayor, the the enforcement sort of protocols we've seen in other jurisdictions, these concerns often come up. There are sort of growing pains when people see new devices being used and concerns about, you know, shared limited space on multi-use paths and on sidewalks. And what we've seen generally is that the biggest component here is education awareness building, sort of getting that, those social norms kind of developed. So people understand, okay, I shouldn't ride here because I'm going to get the side eye from residents or die. You know, it's sort of a given that, you know, you don't drive your truck on the sidewalk. You shouldn't ride your e-scooter through on a sidewalk either. What we've seen generally is more sort of reactive enforcement when there is, when there are complaints, when there are concerns raised by residents, when there are sort of repeat offender sort of areas. Blitzes can be useful from, again, an education standpoint, but in partnership with York Region Police. The concerns that we've seen in other jurisdictions tend to not sort of bear out as much as they were worried about at first. There's always going to be those interactions that are either uncomfortable or dangerous when, yeah, riders are using these devices, particularly the personally owned devices. And one of the benefits of bringing in a shared program is that those devices are actually more likely to be limited in speed because the vendor is forced to, you know, put out an e-scooter that can only go about 20, 24 kilometers an hour. Whereas we're still seeing issues right now where some devices are being sold on the market that can go way faster than the provincial maximums of 25 kilometers an hour would allow. So part of it is, yeah, using that enforcement through engagement with police and those sort of targeted and sometimes reactive enforcement approaches, but it's also about engaging, continuing to work with MTO and the feds. And municipalities across Ontario are doing this right now to try and make sure that devices that are being sold and being used are legally compliant in the first place. And we're seeing that as well with e-bikes.
Okay, that's actually a good segue into my next question then. Thank you. It's almost like we rehearsed this. The, the, can you give us some high-level highlights about what's, what the provincial law, aside from this potential strategy that we're looking at today? What does the provincial law say about some of the key issues with regard to micro mobility? So you touched on the, the speed limits. And I was only made aware of that very recently. I did not know that. But the other one I wondered, wondered if you could touch on is age limits. Because, I mean, regardless of what we do or don't pass, the provincial law will take precedence over any of that stuff. So can you just give us a kind of a framework of some of those provincial regulations that we have to operate in?
Yes, thank you. And through the chair, the the regulations around age are super important. I'm glad this is brought up because there is a lot of, I think, lack of awareness among the public right now. I think we've probably all seen children riding e-scooters, and my heart sort of stops in its place when I see that because we've seen from the research, from emerged departments, seeing injuries, these devices are not appropriate for children. They're too powered. They're, they can go faster than children's, you know, reflexes can accommodate. And it's crucial that the education component, the awareness component for parents at schools make very clear that these devices are not permitted anywhere in Ontario for under 16.
Right. And I think that needs to be underlined. It is illegal.
Yeah, full stop. It's not a matter for Richmond Hills consideration. It's a provincial rule. For e-scooters, same with e-bikes. Related to that, the rules around helmets. So for anyone under the age of 18, so 16 and 17-year-olds have to wear a helmet when riding these devices. 18 and above, highly encouraged, but not required by law. Those are the main sort of age-related pieces. From other items, so speed, the provincial maximum for e-scooters is, I believe, 25 kilometers an hour. Municipalities can choose to go lower than that, 24, 23. I mean, this is sort of the norm where these tend to be. E-bikes tend to be more around the 30, 32 kilometers an hour, kind of in line with the American standards around 20 miles an hour. So the devices are sold with the same sort of speed limiters. Yeah, but I think that that age limit, 16 and up, is crucial from an education awareness standpoint, just for safety. Another piece is no passengers. We see sometimes people riding tandem on these e-scooters. Not a good idea, carrying cargo as well. So these, again, are pieces that would be highlighted through an education and awareness campaign.
All right, I've got other things, but I'll leave those till we deal with the items. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor West. Okay, next one, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much. Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. Actually, Mayor asked a number of things I have in mind. You already explained it, the age differential. Something doesn't come too logical to me, but nonetheless, that's what the rule is. Now, insofar as the timeline, I only see up to 27. Like, my understanding is mentioned somewhere, the pilot for Ontario as a whole for municipalities opt in is until 2029. So, and relating to that, a number of your activities, public education campaign, short-term, with that kind of short-term meaning to 2027. I just want to be clear on that through Mr. Chair.
Sure. Thank you for the question. And through the chair, the timelines for program implementation, that sort of initial phase of education would start, you know, right after the bylaw gets enacted, should it go forward. From, from the provincial standpoint, the e-scooter pilot was initially going to expire, I believe it was around this year, and was just extended. Should it be, you know, continued, it would likely be made indefinite. It's, we're still in that period of wanting to have, at least from the provincial standpoint, a closed kind of bounded period of when these pilots will take place. But what we've seen with e-bikes, for examples, is no longer a pilot. They're just permitted going forward. And I would imagine that that would likely be what happens with the e-scooter pilot as well. But yes, these are programs that would, that would continue. These are sort of the starting points. I would imagine, and I don't want to speak for city staff, but that it would likely be, you know, an initial period of education, awareness building. Whenever the shared program is launched, if it is chosen to be launched, would coincide with that series of engagement activities. And then it would, it would continue. And sort of council committee would take the pulse of the community into 2027 and beyond. And this is just the beginning of the journey. It wouldn't be sort of a one-time thing.
Thank you. Through Mr. Chair, can you bring back or show that slide with all the different vehicles on the left side, on the right-hand side of check, check, check? Could you bring, show that slide again? I do have a question on that.
Sure. Not sure who does that, but.
I try to ask it for us. Oh, yes. Yeah, off-road trail, the first one. As I understand it, not at least one, if not more, our neighboring municipalities would not allow for that. Is that correct? Of the off-road trail for this e-scooter.
I would have to go back to my notes to double-check the specific regulations for the neighboring municipalities, but.
Answer now, but I just want to raise it, maybe come back on the 24 or in between, we'll chat with Frank and you on this one. Because I know, well, I don't know. It so happens we are not bordering the City of Toronto. As I understand it, the City of Toronto doesn't allow period. Is that not?
For e-scooters, correct.
Right, okay. So anyway, but I, I, I'm sure that you probably have pingboxed it for a reason. We'll talk offline then.
Yeah, again, through the chair, those boxes are just to show that these are changes. The red, the highlighted boxes are changes from the status quo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And presumably, we have more discussion when we talk about agenda item. Thank you.
For Councilor Davidson.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. That slide at the bottom, it says 14-year-olds will be able to ride a bike on the sidewalk. Do you mean, you mean other, you mean a human-powered bike?
Yes, a traditional non-e-powered bicycle.
Okay, so I'm really worried that we're ever going to get kids under the age of 16 off these things. And they're going to ride on the sidewalk, and I don't know how, I don't know how we're going to solve this problem because I already get complaints from people. Is there any research in that shows the difference between accidents or injury from when you just slide your card and use an e-scooter or something occasionally through a public share compared to people that own it? Because I was looking at stats of injuries. And I feel like the share part is like handing a kid a key to a snowmobile or a jet ski, and just 16-year-olds say. That if you're handing the ability to have an electronic vehicle that's moving, that it's a little more than just whether or not it gets you from A to B. There's some serious health risks. And some of the stats say between 2022 and 2024 in Canada, that there was a, that accident, hospitalizations, not even bumps and bruises. Hospitalizations were up 61% between five and 17-year-olds on e-scooters to over 1,000. Those are kids that were hospitalized. So I feel like we're being a little bit, a little bit laissez-faire about this when this is like putting a kid on a rocket. And I don't know how we're going to, I'm not saying we don't need rules, we do. But is there any, are there any stats about share programs and what the safety record is when kids just use them occasionally? Or people in general, any age?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. And the stats that we've come across so far tend to, again, as I, as I alluded to, show that the shared programs tend to have higher kind of better safety records than personally owned devices, like a parent having an e-scooter in the garage and the kid using it. Again, partially because those devices are speed limited. The acceleration can be limited. And it's overseen directly through municipal enforcement, whereas personally owned devices, the municipality doesn't really have any purview. It's all just through the point of sale. So again, to the point that shared programs can, can be beneficial from a safety standpoint. And I think the stats that you highlighted don't differentiate between shared and personally owned devices, the scooter you buy at Best Buy or on Amazon versus the one that's been used from one of the shared operators. So I think it's an area where we're still trying to collect more data because it is a very real phenomenon where we're seeing these injuries and emerge rooms with kids having these injuries. Again, I want to highlight to be very clear, children are not allowed to use these devices. And anytime I see a parent with their kid using this, I'm always concerned that like, that is not permitted. It would not be permitted should this item go forward in the bylaw. No person under the age of 16 can ride an e-scooter, whether it's a shared one, whether it's a private one. And that's very important. To your first question about sidewalks, what we see in general is that across communities, parents want to ensure that their children of, you know, five, eight, 10, 12-year-olds can ride on the sidewalk with the parents walking alongside them as a safe space to sort of learn how to ride the bicycle. Children are allowed to ride on the street. It's not to say they can't. But we heard very loud and clear through public consultation that parents want to ensure that their children are allowed to ride on the sidewalk until they develop that, those faculties to ride independently on the street. And we've seen from other jurisdictions, that kind of 14 threshold is typically that, that place where we switch to encouraging riders to be on the, on the street.
Thank you. Riding on the sidewalk is already a nightmare because at the very least, we need to say if you're going to ride on the sidewalk, it's single file. But the other question I have is, what, if any, research do we have on the liability that the city faces? If we make rules and then someone gets hurt, is that something for the later discussion? But I'm just interested, I didn't see, like, I feel like we're going to, despite having some of these rules, it's going to be perceived that we're saying, hey, no problem, go ahead. Let your kid ride their bike on the sidewalk or whatever. We're, 16-year-olds can ride an e-scooter on the street beside a big, you know, a big truck. I, what's, I guess we can't discuss it here, but I am very interested offline to discuss what the liability is for the city when it just feels like this is just going to be a big, a big octopus, hard to control and hard to oversee. Anyway, that's my comments for now, but have you looked at any of that?
Yeah, so through the chair, this was a component of this strategy. And in speaking with legal and finance teams at the city and understanding the liability exposure considerations, the first point to raise is that the city has exposure regardless of whether there is regulation in place. We see these devices are here, people are riding them. If somebody gets hurt, there is going to be a question of, did the city take every step, you know, reasonable to ensure their safety? Yeah, so I think, yeah, we can speak to liability in later discussion, but it is something that cities are grappling with. The devices are here. And steps that municipalities are taking, like education, clear rules, signage, very important in managing liability. But what we've seen in municipalities that already have these bylaws in place, the liability exposure tends to be quite, quite manageable in terms of sort of amounts of claims and damages. And we could speak offline about that as well.
Thank you. And my last question is, and maybe you already, forgive me if you've already addressed this. Is Richmond Hill bylaw in a position to stop a kid who shouldn't be riding an e-scooter and say anything? Or is this YRP? Is this police level? Or can bylaw enforce the rules on a municipal level?
Right. So through the chair, my understanding is moving violations are generally, are dealt with through, through police. Bylaw enforcement would be more involved in things like parking violations and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Thompson?
Oh, thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation. There are, I'm going to stay with the theme here on the bylaws for a second here. On slide 17, you're saying the proposed implementation for our bylaws would be, you know, coming, coming right up. I mean, between, you know, whatever happens this morning and try and get things in place for 2026. And I guess what I'm trying to sort out in my mind is that we are a two-tier level government here. So we have the region, we have ourselves. And we've seen in other places where we have bylaws, like say, for signs. And we've seen in other places where we have bylaws, like say for signs that are, you know, applicable for the city and then assign bylaw that's applicable for the region. And I'm wondering, are we going to find ourselves in a potential situation where we could have a conflict between regional bylaws and our own city bylaws?
Right, um through the chair, uh thank you councillor Thompson for the question. The um one of the priorities of the strategy has been to try and ensure alignment across boundaries with the region. And in speaking with regional staff, you know, these devices are already allowed on regional pathways, the the region does permit it. Part of of this um this proposed bylaw is to help harmonize with uh with the region and with um with neighboring municipalities. So, you know, should this move forward, then it would mean that a someone using their micro mobility device doesn't need to try and remember, oh, is this a regionally-owned facility or or municipal-owned facility? I think it's it's a it's a good point that um there needs to be kind of alignment in in the language used for signage and 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 education for for riders. And through a working group that's being created um with, you know, city staff, regional staff to work on the implementation of this, I think that would be a a logical priority to ensure move forward.
Right, thank you. And and I guess I've seen on the regional words, this is typically where we'll see those multi-use sidewalks.
Exactly.
I I don't think I've actually seen any multi-use sidewalks within the the city uh infrastructure. And perhaps I'm wrong on that, but um. Okay, I I think I do have other questions, but I think it's more appropriate for when the item comes up. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thanks, Kellar, councillor Thompson, next one, councillor Liu.
Thank you very much, thank you for the presentation. I also have lots of questions, but I'll ask a few for now. After listening to all my colleagues' questions, in terms of the strategy in front of us, what is the difference between us and other municipalities? Is there any difference that stand out that we should be aware, through you, Mr. Chair?
So through the chair, the the main difference right now, I mean, without putting forward the bylaw, is that these devices are not currently permitted uh when it comes to e-scooters right now. And and they are in the neighboring municipalities, Richmond Hill, Vaughan, Regional Trails. So should this matter be adopted, that would harmonize that. In general, my understanding is uh this would be consistent with the rules and regulations of of Vaughan and and Markham. I'd have to go line by line to to double-check that it's exactly the same. But the idea is for for residents, for users of these devices, there wouldn't be any any noticeable differences.
All right, so actually, my question is, you know, why different cities have and needs to have different practice? Just, you know, councillor Thompson just mentioned, I I think at least it should be a a a regional um law, if not provincial or even national. So I don't quite understand why each city has to do something like this. But I understand this is a a good step forward, but it just just doesn't seem right to me. And um and in terms of enforcement, um so our bylaw officer will not enforce, is the police?
For for moving violations is my understanding.
Yeah, okay. So is the police able to take care of the twelve-years-old? I'm just curious.
So uh through the chair, generally what we've seen uh around the sort of age limitations, there there hasn't been a lot of, um, you know, active enforcement needed in in other municipalities from that matter. It's not like police are going to, you know, ID a a ten-year-old. But but that is something that that could potentially fall within the the powers of police if uh if they're concerned that there's, you know, an adult riding on the sidewalk and, you know, they don't look fourteen under. That is potentially something that could be, you know, contemplated.
Okay, all right, well, I'll 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 save my questions. I think all of us are are like scratching my our heads here um on how to make this work though. But uh, yeah, anyways, thank you very much.
Okay, any any other councillor has questions? Okay, so round one, I do have a few questions. So, Ms. Clerk, can you bring this slide to to the uh the screen as well, especially for that chart checkmark? I do have the same question from our the councillor, uh Gordon Chair. But there are one cases, I know parents normally ride bicycles with a trailer, the kids sitting behind. That time being, if you not allow them to ride bicycles on the sidewalk, there's no way. So for that D here, uh for the bicycles, in that special case, the case is really sitting in the trailer. In that case, what are we going to do for this uh type of situation?
So uh uh under under this proposed bylaw, um an adult riding their bicycle would not be permitted on the sidewalk. That said, um through the city's transportation master plan, there is um sort of a a long-term plan to increase the network connectivity, to have multi-use paths on where there's busy roads and to encourage cycling on quiet, lower-speed, lower-traffic roads. But but you're correct that that a a cyclist um with a trailer behind them, I still expect it to ride uh not on the sidewalk.
Not allowed. Remember, if it is right, you live living from their home, not sidewalk. You cannot write, ask them leave the sidewalk and ride on the back, uh on the main road right away. That's going to be dangerous.
So there there are, um, I my understanding is through the bylaw language, you're allowed to sort of pass through sidewalks to get to to the road.
That's right, a little bit, right? If you go to either park or tri- trail up this way, because trail they can ride there, normally there are no ramp. Right, they cannot drive you from the main road going to the trail. That that can be very dangerous, especially carrier trailers, there's no way you lift up. So we don't have any ramps close the trailers and trails entry. So for that type of situation, is there going to be exceptions? Or you can put something in there, consider that type of the uh the vehicle usage?
No, it's it's a very important clarification you're making. And and I think what I would say is, generally in the bylaw language we see across jurisdictions, we don't typically get to that level of granularity about, you know, if you need to go on a sidewalk for thirty meters, it's okay. Generally, what we see is that enforcement um across the board happens uh with respect to dangerous or disrespectful riding behavior. In in my company's practice, we've never seen, you know, cases of police going after, you know, a a mother with her child riding on ten meters of sidewalk to get to the path. Related to that, though, um through the transportation master plan, uh there are initiatives to try and build trail connectivity, things like curb cuts or those ramps connecting a trail to, you know, a residential street. You make a great point that these are useful access points so that people can ride safely, go from one trail on one side of the street onto a a quiet residential connector and to another trail. And that's something that I think the city can continue to look at.
So that's going to be very expensive, look how many trails we have in our city. Each trail need a ramp, they are going to be cost very expensive. So I'll adjust my suggestions here, consider the basically, that might be a unique situations, similar as what councillor Davidson mentioned. If parents ride a kid like a three or four years old, you cannot leave the on the on the sidewalk by themselves, it's dangerous too. So in that case, well, I think we need to have some kind of um exceptions in the in under this category. Is that can be considered?
Yeah, I mean, I I think I would defer to to city staff on on sort of this precise bylaw language. But um certainly, th- these are, these are in line with what we see generally across Ontario. Again, it's not an enforcement priority across any police force we've seen going after, um, you know, a a parent riding with their small child. This is about safety for pedestrians, uh it's about accessibility concerns for for pedestrians, people with disabilities uh walking on the sidewalk, using their devices. But the point is well-taken, that we want to ensure that we're not penalizing somebody for making a choice, that they they're trying to keep themselves and their families safe. And the bylaw language, the way it's written, um my my belief is that it does that. And that the enforcement priorities of police, bylaw enforcement officers, um more more broadly, would be about going after dangerous uh activity, repeat offenders where there's, you know, um a real threat to public safety and not going after parents trying to look after themselves and their families.
Cool, good, thank you so much. Another one is core the education process, I believe, is the next two slide. Ms. Clerk, can you help me to to the education, the short term and long term?
Slide fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, maybe. So just for uh uh maybe suggestions here. So I see uh CTO one, they do have a lot of big announcement uh on the, using the signage at the each major intersections or street. So when we enforce this, I know it's a big cost here, but is there any way, whenever it's phase one, phase two, phase three, on the major intersection of the road, can we put the signage there? So just give education purpose inside or digitals. Because whenever you're riding on the bicycles, you definitely can pass one of the signage. So you're going to be warning that time being. So my suggestion here is in the face, all the faces, whenever in the future as well. So in winter, no, in wintertime, that's not a big deal. In summertime, when the people start riding bicycles with families, kids, if they see the signage, they're they're going to pay attention, maybe uh there's another way, it's a long-term. Just one-time enforcement, I believe, whenever summer comes, we can put the signage at each corner to warning people in case in future as well. Thank you, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Anyone want to go round two? Okay, no, well, okay, I think this one, we accept the presentation, right?
Can I make a very important note regarding this?
No, this is not the time, okay? Thank you so much. So we accept. Okay, the motion to accept uh accept the uh the presentation, any objections? Okay, okay, more, okay, perfect. So uh councillors, leave it moving, all in favor? Okay, the uh the presentation accepted, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next one, we're gonna have ten delegations here, so let's do one by one. The first one is a ten point one, TAC. Do we need a motion to move it? Mister Clerk, do we need a motion to move this delegation?
Thank you, uh through uh through the chair, in keeping with our practice, at this time, we'll hear all the uh delegations in order that they appear on the agenda, and then we'll move to the agenda.
Perfect, thank you so much. So me, first one, uh TAC, Amir twenty-one, Download Street, Unit two zero seven, regarding to the comprehensive zoning bylaw project, refer in Actum eleven point eight. Go ahead, Mister TAC, Amir.
Yes. Yes, uh, yeah. Mister Chairman, members of committee, Mayor West, I'm talking on behalf of Zetan Inc. that owns the land at the northwest center, northwest junction of railway and Centre Street East. I wonder if there is an overhead there. Camera would show it, but if it doesn't, that's fine too. It has, yeah, okay. Now, this is the, this is the land, this is the land itself. Part, the southern part of it is east to the city and TRCA. And this is the land with this part is the land we are talking about, and the northern land is we are acquiring. Now, it has been assigned N one, neighborhood one uh zoning, which is a serious downzoning compared to what exists to the existing version, which is detached, well, this zoning N one allows very large, in fact, just one large, single detached house. That for that, this appears to be a, you know, this is a downzoning compared to the existing zoning, which allows detached, semi-detached and duplex with minimal setbacks. Because the setback for N one is eighteen meters. Now, considering the costs of preparing the land, thirty-meter setback from the railway, a berm along the railway, a a a concrete screen on top of the berm, relocating the underground cables, relocating the easements there, then eighteen-meter setback for the front yard, all of those, and then remediating one point seven acres of land just for the sake of one house. This is just impractical. Absolutely nothing can be built there, which appears to be an an oversight. And because I can't expect the the staff to have gone through every property in detail and know about the details inside there, the dynamics inside them. So the costs are prohibitive in order to build N one. It's an impractical and illogical and zoning for that. Now, the the logical version would be very high densities and also very high heights are needed to absorb these extraordinary costs associated with developing this land. We have previously submitted throughout the past three years of all these deliberations from regional official plan all the way down here and justifying that high densities and heights are are needed to absorb this. With and and also within high densities, height is also important in order to reduce the footprint so that we can reduce the crash wall, the size of the crash wall needed to protect against the railways. It's not just a crash wall, it is an, it has to be a noise wall and a vibration wall, or not wall, mitigation. The the land has got all the criteria to be included within the MTSA, but our cries have so far not gone far. And um but, you know, it also has, even outside the MTSA um inclusion, it has all the criteria to to enjoy the very, very high densities and very um, you know, high and and good heights, because it it just, it it is the kind of land that, no matter, you know, a lot of things can be built on it without infringing on any of the laws that are available or any of the neighbors, no shadowing, none of those. It does qualify to to have a couple of towers there based on current regulations. It it is, it it enjoys all the, it it is supported by all the laws like green field development, more houses built faster or easier, all of these intensification drives that are around the, you know better than I do, and I don't need to repeat them. So based on that, we defer this process. There are two processes that have been, the 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 staff have recommended, I can follow in the future. I defer those to the futures, ask their their recommendation. Both the the drive to or the push to become part of the MTSA or otherwise have the privilege of building high for the sake of myself and the community. The request here is that.
Mister Amir Emery, you you will use the time, so please wrap up as quick as possible.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
You'll use your time, so five minutes per each individual, so please try to wrap up.
I should press for green one or what? A wrap-up, okay. Yeah, so we request the highest density and heights permitted by Richmond Hill Official Plan now. We couldn't find out, uh you you know, even with AI, I couldn't find the details of what each one of the N categories mean. But it appears that NA, which is neighborhood apartments, especially, you know, should suit the area as a minimum for um to make it viable. And even that is is not certain, but it's a minimum within the within the zoning.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, next speaker, ten ton, ten point two, Michael Manette, MP L A N Inc. On behalf of Robert Sana, regarding to the comprehensive zoning, refer to Actum eleven point eight. Thank you so much, you have five-minute speech.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good morning, members of committee. My name is Michael Manette, and I'm here on behalf of three different landowners. And I have three delegations in a row. I'm hoping that I won't take fifteen minutes, but I'll try and combine them if that's the best way to do it. With respect to this uh comprehensive zoning bylaw, I have a general comment on the entire process to start with. With respect to the proposal for the new comprehensive zoning bylaw, it's my understanding that this is intended to replace the previous CZBL thirty dash twenty-five, which was appealed to the OLT and was was withdrawn by the city due to the uh some errors with respect to public notice. The impellents have incurred costs for preparing and filing the appeals on thirty dash twenty-five to the OLT, which have been made irrelevant due to the city's error in the notice. My understanding is that the bylaw that's before you today, the comprehensive bylaw, is to replace the previous one and of course expand that to the entire city, whereas before it was just for the Young Street Corridor and MTSAs. So the request to counsel or through the committee to counsel is that any fees for the appeals related to uh this proposed bylaw should be waived or previous cost should be reimbursed. So I've been asked to do that on behalf of all the clients, just because of a process issue. And I know that has been discussed with staff, I'm not sure how that will be dealt with. But that is an issue because there was a lot of cost to do the previous appeal. That will be effectively eliminated, but the costs have been made already. If this bylaw continues and similar appeals are filed, that would be a double sort of whammy on all those people. So we just want to express to staffs to come up with some solution for that. So I wanted to say that at the beginning. Now, the the first delegation is with respect, that was. Now, the, the first delegation is with respect, that was ten point two. That's with respect to eighty-three Sylvan Crescent. Uh, the correspondence related to that is identified as eleven point ten dash eighteen. And I'm here on behalf of Robert Sauna, who's the property owner. For this site, the property appears to have three different zones, GNC, N two, and an area called exempt. It's not clear how these were determined and, uh, what the impact on the property will be as a result of that. And so we have an inquiry as to what is the basis for the line work that created those three different designations on the property and also where exactly on the property those boundaries would be, because the scale of the mapping, it's hard to determine that. Floodplain mapping relates, uh, related to the site is flawed. That's overlay E. Based on our correspondence, eleven ten dash eighteen, we've requested that matters in our submission be addressed and the zoning be clarified. So that's a request for further information. And then that same correspondence deals with two other properties. Um, with respect to one oh two seventeen to one oh two two five Young Street, there's an issue with respect to the combination of the height that's shown as nine stories with a density of two point zero and how that was arrived at. Since a two point zero density at a height of nine stories could never be achieved, so I'm not sure how the combination of height and density was determined. That's a downtown property. And so because there's only a limit of, uh, two point zero density, you can never achieve the nine stories in height. So that's another question, I guess. With respect to, um, the material on Sauna, on the floodplain, um, the floodplain is outdated. That's with respect to eighty-three Sylvan. And it's inappropriate and sterilizes the property. That's already been, um, investigated and information has been provided to both TRCA and to the city with respect to updated floodplain modeling. And we just wanted to encourage staff to look at that. So that's my time on the first one. Okay, so I want to move on now to ten point three. Um, so we can change to the next one. And that's the correspondence for that is eleven point ten dash one, uh, nineteen, sorry. That's one two zero three zero Young Street. This site should be treated as an exception. This is the corner of Harrison Young. Mayor West, you're familiar with that application, which was approved. So we have an approved application for, um, a mid-rise development on that site. This site should be treated as an exception based upon the site-specific zoning permissions of bylaw seventy-three dash twenty-four. This bylaw has a maximum floor area of three point six zero based on the approved bylaw. The proposed FAR and the proposed, uh, comprehensive zoning bylaw is three point five six. So there's a difference there. That should be corrected. There are a list of site-specific land use standards in seventy-three dash twenty-four. And therefore, it would appear that the appropriate category should be exception under section thirteen of the comprehensive zoning bylaw to avoid any misinterpretation of the details of the approved zoning. And I'm not sure why that was missed out as far as an exception, because there's an issue with respect to a lot of the detailed regulations in the approved bylaw that were, basically took two years to resolve. That's all I have to say on, uh, that particular one on ten point three. And then my third delegation, so I'm now on to the third, uh, number, is delegation ten point four. The correspondence for that is eleven point ten dash twenty. This property is located within the Young Bernard KDA. And we would like staff to respond to our detailed submission correspondence because we have a lot of information in there and I don't want to spend time here with, uh, with, uh, the committee. But for this property, that's located, uh, in the KDA. There was a KDA bylaw which was dealt with extensively through the, uh, OLT process. There's conflicting information provided by staff in an email of October eighteen twenty-five. There's a schedule that's sent in the email that was different from the schedule in the proposed, uh, comprehensive zoning bylaw. The floodplain issues related to this site have been resolved with TRCA. And we have letters on file from TRCA that effectively reduces, uh, and this is a matter on the north side of the property, which eliminates an overlay setback from, uh, a city-owned property at block thirty-two, which is a, a water course, a stormwater management channel. The floodplain issues related to the site have been resolved and this has not been recognized in the proposed zoning bylaw. There are other, other matters such as, and this is an important one. The objective of the city's comprehensive zoning bylaw, this is stated in some of the background material, is to be user-friendly, easy to administer, enforce and understand, and reflective of current and emerging planning and development practices and trends and fully accessible online in an interactive format. Well, I have to admit, it clearly is accessible on an online format, but it is not easy to use. So those are general comments. And so I urge in moving forward on the comprehensive bylaw that some, uh, adjustments be made, uh, to make it easier to use and also to bring it, uh, forward to current standards and future thinking standards, since it is a new bylaw coming forward for the entire city. And I also would like to suggest to committee and I know staff understands, I've been involved in comprehensive bylaws for many municipalities. They never get finished. They're always under appeal and it's a very difficult process. So in a case like this, it would be useful to have stakeholder engagement as an ongoing process to try and resolve some of these site-specific issues, which I think could probably be handled best through that, uh, individual engagement. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you so much. Next, uh, there'll be, uh, eleven, uh, ten point five, Bill Time, and KLM Planning regarding to the comprehensive bylaw, refer to item, item eleven point eight. You have five minutes. Okay, thank you so much.
Good me, good morning, members of the committee overall. Uh, my name's Bill Tampin from KLM Planning. I'm here on behalf of my clients, Earl Glen Investments in the North Leslie neighborhood, as well as several DG Group parcels in both North Leslie and West Gormley. Uh, we thank city staff for the continued hard work on this project. Um, since my delegation on the, at the September second, uh, public meeting, we have submitted follow-up correspondence, providing some fairly detailed, uh, comments on such matters as transitional policies, uh, front yard landscaping, clarification of several general provisions, identifying some site-specific exceptions, um, some site, some existing site-related exceptions which are attained by my clients that didn't, for some reason did not make it into the new bylaw. Notwithstanding the fact that my clients had to go through some fairly lengthy development processes to get those exceptions in the first place. And finally, the applicability of the greenery policies and Schedule A one upon the West Gormley neighborhood. Uh, my correspondence ha, uh, my correspondence has been included within item eleven point nine of today's agenda. And I know staff has been working very diligently in bringing this project to, to this stage already. And we believe a bit more time, the issues brought up in our correspondence can be addressed or otherwise clarified to everybody's satisfaction. We understand the bylaw is slated for approval by council, I believe, next week. So therefore, concern, it's only been two weeks since the public meeting of September second. We respectfully ask that the approval of the comprehensive bylaw, uh, project be deferred to allow staff and my clients a bit more time to, to go over the issues identifying the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So next item, uh, eleven, ten point six, uh, Pat Pollock, six seven Drummer Crescent regarding to the comprehensive law, eleven point eight. Thank you so much. You have five minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, councillors, staff and residents. I am pleased to see this bylaw at this stage. It has been a long time coming. I have in the past offered suggestions on neighborhood zoning. However, I still see some concerns that I would like to address. Since this is the first time I have seen actual neighborhood zone standards, I will speak more specifically to the N two standards, which encompass my neighborhood. N two figures are taken from the Corporation of the City of Richmond Hill by law number ninety-three dash twenty-five. Number one, on page forty-five, the minimum front yard setback for neighborhoods is three point five meters or eleven point five feet. The average SUV length is sixteen point three feet. A pickup truck is sixteen point nine feet. Even a small car is thirteen point five feet. Potentially vehicles could not fit in the driveway without intruding the sidewalk. Seems to me that this would lead to a lot more street parking, which is currently restricted. Number two, I see a discrepancy on page forty-six, note two, where the minimum parking space is stated at five point seven meters or eighteen point seven feet. Yet the minimum front yard setback is three point five meters or eleven point five feet. Number three, is note twelve on page forty-six referring to what we call the established building line? Is it now calculated by averaging the front setbacks of the two adjacent buildings? Does this supersede the front yard setback provisions? If not, in residential neighborhoods, this established building line would have to be violated, thus not being in conformity with the character of the neighborhood. Number four, this front yard setback is so small that it would not allow a tree to be planted. Aren't trees a priority for Richmond Hill? And number five, please, no reverse driveways. It wouldn't hurt to cross-reference this policy with the comprehensive zoning bylaw. In closing, I would like to make the following comment. Given these changes, I suspect we will end up with even larger monster homes that do not address affordability, the environmental impact, aging in place or maintaining the character of neighborhoods. Are these intended consequences? I would hope that someone on council would address some of these issues before bylaw ninety-three twenty-five is passed. Thank you.
So much. So next one, ten point seven, Ian Andrew, um, Goodman's LP on behalf of the BAF, H and R Property Management and Related Entities.
Thank you. Good morning, Mister Chair, members of council, Mayor West. Thanks for the opportunity to speak again. The entities I'm here on behalf of today are listed in my correspondence, so I'm not going to repeat them. I did speak at the council public meeting a couple of weeks ago, as you know, and raised concerns about the employment land downzoning that's proposed to occur through the CZBL. I have had further discussions with planning and legal staff over the last couple of weeks. It was confirmed that there's no need or reason to proceed with this employment area downzoning now. Uh, it's not necessary for the city's HAF funding, as I understand it. And the OP policy review that's necessary to review what's appropriate on employment lands is still intended to occur in the coming months, as I understand it. So it does not make sense to fundamentally downzone all of the city's employment area lands before this is done. The enforced official plan says offices and other commercial uses shall be permitted in the employment designation, employment area designation. It is not correct to say that the official plan implementation policies allow the city to prohibit through its zoning bylaw uses which are expressly required to be permitted in its official plan. That much is clear and to suggest otherwise is a misreading of the implementation policy. In fact, one of the implementation policies says the uses which are identified in the official plan shall be permitted in the zoning bylaw. It is also not correct to suggest that the removal of these uses is somehow being directed by a provincial policy. The PPS says no such thing. The Planning Act says no such thing either. The provincial definitions speak only to official plan permissions. They don't speak to zoning and they therefore require the city to review its official plan policies first. There's a need to comprehensively study all of the city's employment areas, employment lands and employment corridor designations to determine where it's warranted to have isolated, um, more impactful industrial uses and where a broader, uh, suite of uses would be appropriate. I believe this is even acknowledged in the comments that Mayor West made last week, last time I spoke. What is clear is that the province is not directing the city to downzone its employment lands before this policy review is complete. Interestingly, the CZBL proposes to exclude the employment corridor lands, which is one of the two employment area designations the city has or employment land designations. So if the employment corridor lands are being excluded from the comprehensive zoning bylaw, why can't the employment area lands also be excluded? There's no reason to rush forward with the zoning of the employment area lands before this policy review is complete. Under the proposed bylaw, lands that are designated in the official plan as employment area, um, will have no ability to fill vacant buildings or to develop new buildings or new uses on vacant lands if those uses did not exist before October twentieth, twenty twenty-four. And I'm speaking of office and commercial uses here. The CZBL would only allow manufacturing and warehousing uses to fill those spaces, even if it's right in the middle of an office park surrounded by other office buildings and other compatible uses. I ask, how is that good business? How is that good planning? How does it promote economic vitality? And how does it advance Richmond Hill's stated objective to foster a robust regional mixed-use community? It will just limit the landowner's ability to attract employers that may want to occupy those spaces and those buildings in a manner that's compatible with all the adjacent context. This downzoning is irresponsible, and I say that with respect, but it does not need to happen today. There's no basis for it in law or policy. So we respectfully ask that council put an end to it and to direct staff to remove all of the employment area lands from the CZBL at this time until the OP review, uh, is complete and until the policy work has been done and there's actually a coherent plan or strategy for regulating these areas going forward. Until then, there's no reason to disturb the status quo. No one wants to spend time and money appealing this comprehensive zoning bylaw just to preserve the status quo. But if the bylaw is passed as presently, uh, drafted, that is unfortunately what my clients are going to have to do. And we don't see how that's a productive use of anyone's resources because we're just going to be having the same discussion many months from now. Um, so again, it's our respectful request that the employment area lands be excluded from the comprehensive zoning bylaw before it's brought forward for enactment next week. Thank you.
Okay, uh, you have another one, right?
I do.
Okay, please.
Thank you.
Another five minutes.
Okay, switching gears now, and I, I did not speak about this one the last time I was here. So I'm, I'm here for this one, uh, on behalf of a number company, two four zero two eight two eight Ontario Inc., uh, which carries on business as the York Montessori School. Uh, my client, Ms. Birami, is here in the audience with me today and she runs the York Montessori School at ten five three three Leslie. And she's been educating the city's children at this institution for approximately eighteen years. And it, it's regrettable that I have to attend here today because this feels like deja vu. Uh, as you may recall, the York Montessori School appealed the city's official plan amendments eighteen point three and eighteen point four a few years ago because those, uh, amendments failed to reflect the existing, um, school use, the day nursery use as is defined, uh, in the official plan and in the zoning bylaw. And for whatever reason, the permitted uses were not carried forward when the official plan amendments were done. So we went through a long appeal process. It took about two years to get to a settlement with council. We did ultimately achieve a settlement, which was appreciated last fall. And that was implemented through the Ontario Land Tribunal, which resulted in a new official plan site-specific policy, six point five one, that expressly permits, uh, the day nursery use, which, uh, relates to the existing York Montessori School. And it also expressly permits all other uses in the zoning bylaw that are not inconsistent with that, uh, that they shall be continued to be permitted. So here we are today with the new comprehensive zoning bylaw coming in. And as drafted, it does not, uh, carry forward any of those uses which the official plan says must be permitted on these lands. And what's even more troubling is the notice aspect of this because the only reason this came to my client's attention is because I happen to be, um, deep into the minutia of this bylaw for other clients. And I, I noticed that her lands were supposed to be downzoned without these uses being carried forward. So, but for that, um, notice by me and, and intervention, um, this zoning bylaw probably would have been passed without her even knowing. And that's really problematic because it's not clear why this comprehensive zoning bylaw is downzoning properties at all. My understanding was this is intended to be, uh, a coordination exercise or a, a way of harmonizing all of the existing patchwork of zoning bylaws that date back decades in this municipality into one easy-to-read single document that would have all the information for zoning. I think that's the broad objective here. So if that's the case, it should be collecting the previous zoning provisions and carrying them forward, especially where there's a recently approved official plan policy requiring that. It should not be downzoning sites. Um, it's a very strange and problematic way to approach land use planning if these downzonings get slipped into comprehensive amendments without the landowners being specifically notified. The, all that said, I understand, uh, based on discussions with staff and I understand my clients had some discussions with some of you over the last week, that there is an acknowledgement of this issue and an intent to, to try to fix it. So I'm grateful for that and I hope that can happen. Um, I, I think the specific fix, which I understand staffer are now considering, is to introduce a site-specific provision into the comprehensive zoning bylaw, which would carry forward those existing uses in the existing zoning bylaws that are supposed to be carried forward under the OP policy. So I'm hopeful that that happens, um, before the bylaws brought forward for enactment next week. I'm certainly available to continue speaking with staff to, to get the specifics correct. And, uh, I just wanted to bring it to your attention today to make sure nothing falls through the cracks and, and to make sure that my clients... to make sure nothing falls through the cracks and and to make sure that my clients' interests are protected uh and preserved. So um that's the request, that the site-specific provision be inserted into the comprehensive zoning bylaw for next week. Hopefully, we can come to a a specific form of language that works and is appropriate. Otherwise, I'm sure you'll be hearing from me, but hopefully that can be achieved, and you won't need to. So uh subject to any questions, those are my submissions for that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. So next delegation, ten point nine, so so I have Ahmad, Scooty Mobility Inc. regarding to the micro mobility strategy.
Good morning.
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and and hello, council. Thank you for having me. My name is Troy Ahmed. I'm the founder and CEO of Scooty, a micro mobility operator. Uh, and I wanted to commend uh the presentation uh given by uh Frank Supa and his team, and also uh W S P and Stuckworth Consulting. Um, as an operator, I I I I empathize with some of the questions a lot of the council uh posed uh to uh Mr. Frank's team. But it's great to see that Richmond Hill is developing a micro mobility strategy, an effective approach because it looks more a- at at things just beyond e-scooters and and some great questions on the different kinds of mobility devices there. And we believe as an operator, a part of an effective micro mobility strategy is to develop a very controlled, small, measured pilot. Um, staffer recommending uh council to do a education program, which is excellent. But with an education program, you have to get people to test and try it. Um, it's very different from reading a pamphlet or watching things on social media, but actually testing it out uh solves a lot of those questions. Um, one of the unique things about Scooty is that our focus has always been to connect people to and from public transit. And this is what we're doing in the cities of Markham, which is uh, you know, your neighbor, um, uh Burlington, uh Barry, and the city of Brampton. And our biggest transit partner is Metrolinks. And uh as of August of this year, I'm proud to announce that we have, we are working very closely with Metrolinks and Presto integration for people to pay for their Scooty rides uh using Presto, which will be released in the very near future. Um, transit integration is a very important aspect of our service. Uh, and it was great to see that the the staff report uh addresses transit integration to be a major component uh of a micro mobility use here in the city. I wanted to uh take the time to answer some of the questions the council was posing to the staff. And I'll start with Mayor West. Uh, Mayor West, you asked a question on enforcement. Um, and so how we are doing enforcement is we actually know who is riding and where they're riding in a very detailed manner. And specifically in the city of Burlington, we work very closely with the enforcement team in the city, including uh Halton Police. And we share anonymized information to um various staff and law enforcement in case there are any issues. Um, again, to to staff's point on education, education is very important. But until people test it and ride it in a very small controlled area, they get a better sense of what um how you can use micro mobility in a city. Um, to the chair, the chair, you asked a question on exemption. Uh, exemption of cargo bikes is an example, as you were pointing it out. So one of the things that we did was in our operations to one of the go-stations in the city of Brampton called Bramley Go Station. Um, there were no bike lanes for people to use to get into the go-station. So we work with the city to uh seek out an exemption of six hundred meters of the sidewalk so that people can ride into the go-station and drop off their scooties and pick them up when they're coming back home. So exceptions are important, flexibility is important, and staff has sort of indicated that as an option. Um, because m- mobility and micro mobility is going to change, it's going to, technology evolves faster uh than regulation. So I think some flexibility is is very important. And um it I was pleased to hear that you recommended that as well. Um, in terms of um councillor Chan, you asked a question on um, you know, uh launching a program in the city in the city in twenty twenty-seven along with the full year on education program. What we have seen is uh education is important, but you also have to get to communicate to where people are. So for example, uh to councillor Davidson's question on how do we um educate children on not to ride these scooters, you know, under sixteen years of age as an example. So one of the places where we go is we go where parents and children are. So we go to the libraries. And we do events in libraries. We educate parents and children that you should not be riding this if you're under sixteen. To councillor Davidson's question, how do we ensure that if anybody is sixteen and under, uh, that shouldn't be riding it? So we have an age verification process on our app. So if you are under the age of sixteen, you cannot, the app will completely give, c- cuts off access for you to rent a a vehicle. And to councillor Scott Thompson, you you asked the question on uh engagement. Engagement is extremely important, but it's also a two-pronged approach. The city does its work in terms of educating the public, but as operators, we need to do that as well. And that is the conclusion of my delegation. Thank you so much. I'm happy to take any questions.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So uh, it's correct, we need a motion move to the, okay, perfect. Perfect. Okay, so let's uh go to the uh the eleven point five for the micro mobility strategies. Anyone want more? Okay, uh, thank you, uh, um councillor Sue Tmoid. Do you want to speak as well?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation before and also the staff report here. And um, uh, I would like to support this staff report and move it forward. Uh, just a few questions and comments. Uh, like some of my colleagues mentioned about and Mayor West mentioned about the enforcement. And one of the delegates just uh right uh before me is about enforcement. I'm I'm just thinking about what the actual situation will be to enforce. Let's say if someone just called the bylaw team or city bylaw team, uh, they saw someone just illegally riding on the sidewalk, something like that, okay? So the bylaw team will call the police and to come to just drive around the residential zone to catch that illegal person or just stop a car at the residential zone to see if there's any other illegal riders. I just want to specifically to know more details about how to enforce. Can you, can someone show the public? What's the procedure and what's the exact pictures?
Through the chair, I'll I'll take a, I'll take a triattack uh question, councillor Shu. So the intent is not um, if I can use the term, we're going to enforce through education. That's that's the intent. We don't really want to get into penalties. There there are um amps that we're looking at uh a- amending through the bylaw in the event that we do need to go that route. But as as some of the speakers said earlier, the intent is not to get a sixteen-year-old who is minimum age rider. Uh, give them a ticket. Um, it's to edu- educate them. Uh, however, when we do get these types of complaints, I wouldn't expect that we would be calling out um Y R P or possibly a bylaw officer, keeping in mind, resources are what they are. Uh, if we called them up for every single call, we we just wouldn't be able to manage that. We would expect that where we have um uh a collection of calls, several calls, like volume coming in, that there's several uh accounts of of riders not following the rules, then we would, we would uh either call Y R P or maybe have a bylaw officer go up. But we we wouldn't be able to enforce every single time that that happened. It just could potentially be too onerous on 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 resources.
Uh, but how about uh those e-scooter shares the role with other vehicles? Are they still follow the traffic rule on roads? Like, if they're speeding, just give them a ticket?
A- and I think that's through the the moving violations that Adam had mentioned with Y R P. And 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 again, only certain vehicles can ride on the roads, the shared roads. Uh, and that that all goes by the speed limit that the vehicle can actually travel at, but those would be policed by the Y R P.
Okay, uh, according to the report before, uh, we can see so many recommendations on education and 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 enforcement. Uh, we can see there's so many short short-term and also medium-term enforcement. How about long-term? Because I, based on my understanding, this regulation is for long-term. This is the long-term. So is there any long-term enforcement or education program to share with us?
So through through the chair to councillor Shu, right now, the the uh short, medium, and and or the short and medium-term uh items you're seeing in the in the report really are to deal with what we understand today, uh, educate the public, and then we're going to monitor and see what happens. The intent, even though the 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 shared mobility pilot, I believe, right now is only uh contemplated to go until twenty twenty-nine, that could get extended. It doesn't mean we can't keep our bylaw enacted and and go forward. And that also means the education piece would continue to go forward. But as we learn what's happening with the process, we would then add to the education piece as as we need.
Okay, you're just talking about the uh twenty twenty-nine, the pilot ends. Where the provincial pilot ends in the twenty twenty-nine, what's next for our bylaw like this? Do we have to amend the bylaw? What's next through Mr. Chair?
Uh, th- through the chair to councillor Shu. So the the bylaw, I believe, would remain enacted and only change unless we decided to to make a change following what the 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 province tells us.
Okay, um, I've just, I have an idea. Uh, is the city allowed to put additional measures for the micro mobility riders beyond just the helmet route from the provincial government? Like, uh, s- such as a mandate wearing gloves, a mandate elbow packs, a mandate knee packs, or even reflective clothing? Because um in so many municipal row or secondary row, just uh at the residential zone, it's usually darker than regional row in the night. So I think if if it's not, if it's possible to put additional measures for the riders, for e-scooter or other micro mobility, it may be a good idea for to protect both the riders and also the public. Is this, something like this feasible?
Through the chair to councillor Shu. So the the answer is yes. The the e-scooter pilot program that the province is is um bringing forward allows municipalities to enter into this realm of micro mobility. But the municipality still has the right to be able to go in and amend, make changes, add certain things. A- again, I think that'll all come from the um what we learn as we go through this process. So the answer is still yes, we would be able to amend that.
Is any plan in place now to put additional measures just beyond the provincial government?
Through the chair to the council, yes, we could do that now. If council's so uh directed, yes, we could make changes currently.
Okay. Okay, um, that's all my comment is around. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, uh councillor Sue. Next one, councillor Silvys.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh thank you very much um to Director Supa and um Adam Rosenfield from W S P. Greatly appreciate your presentations. Um, and also uh thank you also outside of A A C, the Accessibility Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for your presentations to that committee as well, which I chair. And I think the comments that come from that committee are paramount. And um as we as we've discussed there, there's always a concern about these micro mi- micro mobility um uh vehicles with regards to people who are sight impaired, hearing impaired, and people who are not able-bodied. So there's a huge concern there. Now, I know we're going to address them, um, and for that, I I s- I I really appreciate that that the attention to that. There was also um a concern about um the riders of these vehicles wearing earpods or headphones. So they cannot hear what's going on around them. And um it's it's just as bad as any pedestrian walking al- along a a sidewalk, even though they're not allowed on there, that is these these vehicles are silent, and you cannot hear them coming. So um it that is a huge concern. I I do believe that the education and awareness campaigns are going to be very, very important. Signage, um, a lot of signage, the the big, the big signs, the curbic signs that we put on the roads as well, those are excellent to inform people of information. And and uh geo-fencing, that that's an excellent idea. Um, these, what I call back to the future, future gizmos are remarkable. I mean, I never thought I'd see it in my lifetime, but they go bombing down, up and down Young Street on the sidewalk, and they're moving faster than the cars. It's there, there needs to be something that that comes out of the manufacturing side of life, in my opinion, to prevent these um micro mobility vehicles from going any faster than, oh, I don't know, fifteen, twenty kilometers an hour. Uh, so that's a whole other thing. Um, along trails, uh, very important, again, with signage. I know we spoke about um the concerns that we had discussed with the uh the at the D D O Park Steering Committee meetings as well, which I chair. And um those are concerns too about noise, um, about um about people speeding along those trails and um basically interfering with someone's quiet, private walk through a forest. So how do we deal with that? Um, I think it also comes from, it's going to come from respect from the riders of these vehicles, because there doesn't seem to be that. From what I have seen, uh, driving up and down Young Street as they bomb along the sidewalk and in the residential roads too, it's just, they're just gone. And um it can be very scary to someone, especially someone who's hearing impaired, and all of a sudden they're there. It can also be very scary uh to parents who are walking with children or who are walking with babies in strollers. So um those are some of my concerns. Um, what, what I also spoke about at uh Accessibility um Committee was we had all, we'd recently gone to Ottawa for the A M O conference. I found that the micro mobility signage in Ottawa, Ottawa was remarkable. Now, I think it's obvious because they've been doing it a long, a long, much longer time than anybody else. But there was a respect from the riders and the pedestrians. Nobody got in anybody's way. There was no screaming and shouting. So I I I would say m- my suggestion to to you, to staff, is to have a discussion with Ottawa. Because somehow along the way, they have, they have figured out a way to do this, even if it's taken years. That they've got s- very specific signage on the sidewalks. They've got very specific signage that you you have to read. But again, if someone is ha- has a, has a, eh, has a sight problem, there's still going to be a a concern and a problem, and we have to take that into effect as well. Micro mobility uh transportation is is here. It's a thing. And it's not going anywhere, and it's probably going to get more and more complicated. So um I look forward to this uh coming further back uh to us. And um and I just want to thank you all for for all the work you're doing here. It's very complicated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Silvys. Next one, Mr. uh Mayor David Weiss.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, so I I appreciate this presentation, and I've been uh interested in seeing this come forward now for quite some time. Uh, I I think it's important that, you know, as we try to do always in in Richmond Hill, you know, we are, we're trying to make things better and and also respond to the future. And I think this uh generally does that. Uh, you you know, I I always find it interesting when I'm driving around in Toronto and, you know, there's a ban on micro mobility. I mean, that is, it's hilarious because there's just so much micro mobility going on, and they're just essentially turning a blind eye to that. That's not good. And and I mean, eventually, Richmond Hill, if we did the same, took the same tack, it would, we'd have the same problems that they're having, you know, with conflicts between different types of uh uh mobility. So the horses are out of the barn. Um, we need to address this. And frankly, in fairness, I think the micro mobility uh devices that we're commonly seeing on our our roads are actually very useful and very helpful for us to get around our community. The the key is obviously to, you know, put rules around the the use of all of these different ways of getting around and making sure that everybody, you know, does their best to be respectful and 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 work, eh, m- most importantly, in a safe way. And and that is what we're trying to achieve here. Um, you know, I I I will say, I just quickly, I mean, I am a car driver, I'm a pedestrian, and I also have been trying to do a little bit of cycling lately. And so this summer, I have been thinking a lot about, well, what does it mean to be in each of these modes? And I think that's the key, right, is to make sure that that each of these modes realizes that while they themselves feel vulnerable, vulnerable, in many cases, if you're on micro mobility, you're also making other people feel vulnerable too. And I think that's really the the important, to remove those conflicts. So I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, with regard to shared use, um, I'll be blunt. When I look at our neighbor in to the west in Vaughan, I I don't know what they're doing there with the shared use. But I I I'm really surprised to see um micro mobility devices scattered all over the 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 uh community. I mean, there, it's a mess. And um if we're going to do something in Richmond Hill, we absolutely need to make sure that that when they're finished, the user's using and they're finished using the device, it's parked in a place that it's supposed to be parked, not laying on the sidewalk waiting for somebody to trip over. Um, I I I'm, uh, there's Um, I I'm, there's gotta be lessons to be learned there and and we need to make sure that that happens uh, when when we, when the time comes and we do this. Um, the enforcement, I do agree with you one hundred percent that education is going to be the key. But let's be honest, there will be times where enforcement is going to be necessary. And we need to come up with a plan that we can do the best we can with the resources that we have to provide enforcement where necessary. And I, and I, you know, I I I really think we need to give that a lot of thought because that expectation will happen, I guarantee it. And we need to be able to respond in a reasonable way. I agree with you. We're not going around, you know, hiding behind trees, ticketing twelve year olds for driving, you know, doing something improperly. But at the same time, there are going to be conflicts that happen that need to be addressed and we need to be prepared to do that. Um, I am a little bit concerned with the idea of, uh, I want to delve further next week between now and council about some of these exceptions. And I'm probably going to run out of time. I do have an amendment that I'd like to put forward in the next round. But it deals with, um, there are places in Richmond Hill where it's realistically impossible for, say, a bike rider to not ride on a sidewalk. And um, in the minute I have left, I'll explain this. Uh, I I, the other day, as as an example, I drove my bike from basically Jefferson and to Richmond Green. Pretty long ride. Getting north south in Richmond Hill isn't that hard on side streets and all that kind of stuff, and I felt very safe. But when I got to the railroad track, which bifurcates the city uh, and and ravines that bifurcate the city in a north-south direction, because that's what Mother Nature did. Um, there's a real problem going east and west. And I think there needs to be uh, recognition of the fact that you cannot get from Richmond Green to where I started from without going on a regional road. And most of those regional roads, there's no way I would recommend anybody be driving, like on Elgin Mills, there's no bike lanes. And there's really no safe way to get from here to there. So there needs to be a way. Um, I will bring up the amendment in that deals with that in in the second round. So, Mr. Chair, if you could just put me down for that. And um, but I I would like to hear the rest of the discussion from council in this round before I do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Mayor. So next one, councillor Davidson.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I I just want to offer my my ideas, picking up on what Mayor West has said. Um, there is not one street, regional or otherwise, in Broad One, say, from either um, either Jefferson Side Road or Stovall up to Bloomington, which is continuous sidewalk or not sidewalk, no bike lanes. So I feel like we need to work with the region for those busy lanes because you can't connect. Even if we had a share ride, ride share, you cannot get to either of the go stations without going on a regional road. And there's no bike lanes or any, like, I am not, to even think of a scooter on Bloomington where the speed limit is eighty is so irresponsible and the same with with Bathurst, Leslie, any of those streets. So I'm worried about the connectivity and maybe we need to talk about bike lanes, I don't know. But it it feels like it's it's a huge concern. If our goal is to make it easy for people to get to transit, we have to think about go stations, at least in my word. Um, the other thing I want to say, no, I feel like we need to make sure the education states things that seem obvious, like no riding more than single file on a road, because I see kids riding in a line. I also would like us to consider not letting um, mobility um, devices in parks. Because bicycles are already a problem in places like Lake Wilcox, where our whole family will ride this way and ring their bell and everybody has to jump out of the way. I feel like we need to prioritize as many people as possible enjoying a park. And most of them won't be on e-scooters or bikes. So I'd like to, I'd like us to contemplate not allowing uh, these things in parks. I I I, again, the enforcement thing with that is a is a problem. Um, and the other um, issue I want to ask, so we had a presentation from a vendor, I guess. Has the city made promises or or has any agreements with someone to get a ride share? Because I feel like the ride share is a little bit down the road.
Through the chair to councillor Davis, no, we haven't made any arrangements or spoken to anybody uh, outside of the report that you have in front of you. That'll come through an RFP process. Right now, what we've recommended for twenty twenty seven, and that's after all the education's taken place.
Okay, thank you. Those are my comments. And I would support, I look forward to hearing the mayor's uh, motion because I, or amendment. Because I I just feel like we need to really hone in on some of the realities, like you can't get some places without being on a sidewalk or in a dangerous spot. So that's a long-term goal. I realize all this won't be lined up before we get this policy out, so, but thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, councillor. Next one, councillor Thompson.
Well, thank you very much, uh, through you, the chair. Um, I'm trying to get a a good idea exactly where the province is in all of this. So when they've uh, basically allowing the municipalities to opt in and and whatnot, where is this supposed to ultimately end up as far as the the province is concerned? Because what I see is that we're, each municipality is now trying to sort out what type of bylaws they need to have and that type of thing. And so is there some point where the province is going to have an expectation that they're going to take data back from everything that the municipalities are doing and then try and provide some oversight? I'm I'm a little fuzzy on where the province is with all of this.
So through the chair to councillor Thompson, I'm going to ask our manager of transportation, Hubert Eng, just to kind of touch on that. He's got a little bit more background on that topic.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Frank. And thank you through the chair to councillor Thompson. Um, with respect to the province's uh, pilot program regarding e-scooters right now, uh, the province is collecting some feedback from the various municipalities who are opting in to run such pilot programs. And a lot of the feedback will be taken into consideration by provincial staff to make any future decisions on uh, the the future of of e-scooters and where they lie within the various municipalities across uh, the province. So there is a possibility that the pilot program could be extended further in the future. Or if the province determines that there's sufficient information to make a more permanent decision, that's where we anticipate this to be to be moving forward.
Uh, thank you for that. So in the meantime, each municipality is coming up with their own bylaws, uh, which at some point, we may be giving this, the the province may say, well, now we're going to legislate something and I guess everybody's going to have to tweak their bylaws. Would that be a safe assessment to say?
Thank you through the chair, and that is certainly one of the potential possibilities and outcomes of the province's pilot program.
I see. Um, I do want to talk, stay a little bit more on on that. Um, particularly, well, okay, let me look at it from the education side here. Uh, it it seems to me that, you know, if we're going to educate all these individuals, I look at what happened with pleasure crafts and everybody that wants to operate a boat, whether it be under ten horsepower, over ten horsepower, you know, that type of thing. I think we're kind of looking at the same thing here in that, you know, if we're going to be putting restrictions for certain types of mobility, whether it be an e-scooter or e-bike or something like that, then the province should probably be stepping up and saying uh, we need to have some sort of uh, I I don't know if you call that um, licensing, I think they called it a, well, a card. So you had to take a training for what they called the the pleasure craft operator's card in boats regardless of age. You have to have a card if you're going to operate a boat. So even if you're under twelve years old, if you're going to operate that boat at ten horsepower, you need a card. If you're over twelve but under sixteen, you still need a card, even though you're restricted in terms of what you can uh, reasonably drive on the on the water. So I'm thinking we need the same thing here, you know, this is something. So um, I kind of get where we received a a comment from somebody saying, why are we going ahead with bylaws right now? Um, but at the same time, I think it's because we don't have a bylaw. I think it's more important that we get something in place, and if we have to tweak it later, so be it. But, you know, we really have a a situation where there isn't a bylaw right now, and that's just plain and simply not good. So I I guess those are my comments. I I I just think that this is something where the province, you know, we really got to get them. Uh, we got to advocate for them to help us in this because, quite frankly, I think we're being asked to do something that we don't actually have the authority to take on. That's what it looks like, in my opinion, so. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Thompson. Next one, councillor Liu.
No, thank you. Um, yeah, so many questions and so little answers. And uh, and and it's not an easy job, so thank you very much for doing all these. Um, it's not easy. Um, I'm going to start with a fun question. How can you tell an e-scooter is speedy?
The chair to councillor Liu, you're right, that is a good question. Um, without some kind of a radar board, I would have to assess it against other moving traffic around that device, getting an idea what they're moving at and if they're moving at the same speed. If if the e-scooter is supposed to be moving at no more than twenty-four, you have a vehicle traveling at about forty kilometers and the e-scooter is keeping pace, you know they're speeding. Uh, but without a radar board, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Thank you very much. I'm not trying to put you in a in a hard place, but, you know, echoing councillor Thompson's um, uh, comments, you know, we don't have the authority. Not only we don't have the authority, we don't have the resources to do all these. So through you, Mr. Chair, to staff, I'm, what I'm thinking is more or less, you know, the same line as councillor Thompson. We license dogs, we license cats. Can we license e-scooters?
Thank you through the chair, uh, to councillor Liu. And I just want to also add a little bit of context with respect to your previous question as well.
Okay.
Um, in terms of uh, shared, a shared e-scooter service um, is very important. And that's actually one of the uh, one of the benefits of of launching a uh, shared e-scooter system in that we can monitor and have the available information of how quickly are they going? Are they uh, beyond the actual posted uh, speed limits of e-scooters? Um, we can monitor and make sure that, work with the vendors, potential vendors in the future to make sure they're following uh, all of the rules. So that the technology has um, certainly uh, advanced um, over the last few years to provide municipalities and vendors to to have some of those options.
All right, thank you. Um, what's my question? Um, I forgot. Okay, we license um, e-scooters.
Through the chair to councillor Liu, I would think that can be a possibility and something we would take away as maybe an amendment to to our bylaw or what we're bringing forward today. That that could potentially be possible, given that other other crafts, other vehicles have been licensed in the past, uh, not including micro mobility. I would say it could be done.
Yeah, I I think so too. No? Do you want to respond, Commissioner Seals? Through Mr. Chair.
Through Mr. Chair, no, actually, I don't know the answers to that.
Okay, okay. I I would like, I I I really would like to explore that, because, you know, same as the councillor Thompson's comments, you know. The only thing we can regulate is through licensing, through licensing, we can have a registration system. We know who owns e-scooters. And we can educate those people, those riders, through that licensing system or registration system. And I think that's the only way. We we try to ensure safety, not only to the riders. We always, also to the pedestrian and also to the, you know, cars, operators, and so on, so. Commissioner Seals?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I would just caution though that licensing systems, regardless of what they license, are costly and 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 administratively intensive. So I'm not sure that even if we could, that that would necessarily be a way to go when we do have the the ability to have the the shared uh, systems that would probably um, cover the majority of the scooters.
We need to uh, think about, so so that led to my, that's lead to my next question is, so why don't we do a full ban, just allow shared? Um, e-scooters? Because we can regulate and we can control when it's shared. But if personally owned, that nothing we can do, nothing we can enforce. Just, I'm just throwing an idea out there. Because when I look at Toronto, they they have a full ban. And and I don't understand, they have their reasons, but I don't understand why we are that different from 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 Toronto. I think we have the same problem. Except for our roads might be wider or, you know, we are suburban. But but other than that, we're all facing the same problem. So I'm playing devil's advocate here. So why don't we first do a full ban? And then we learn from other municipalities and then we, you know, try the licensing system, registration system, the share program and stuff.
So through through the chair to councillor Liu, um, not to sound argumentative in any way, but uh, there's a full ban right now. Um, and and there's no, there's no um, process in place. So this is really trying to put something in place, keeping in mind, we're going, we're going to learn what works and what doesn't work. And I do want to follow up with other municipalities to see if there's any kind of licensing out there. I'm not aware of anything like that. Uh, and to say, could it be done? It could probably be done. I haven't looked at the drawbacks, however, as councillor Steel has mentioned yet. Uh, but it's definitely something we could look into and get back to you to say it works or it doesn't. But right now, I think the idea of 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 an outright ban, uh, we have that right now. Uh, and you're still seeing these devices all over the place. So there needs to be something put into place at this point.
Okay, right, okay, fine, thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm just thinking that, you know, the the learning curve is painful. It's going to be very
It will be.
Right, and uh, and and I don't know. Okay, then, thank you very much. Um, that's uh, all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, councillor Liu. Next one, deputy mayor, Gordon Chan.
Oh, thank you, um, Mr. Chair, and thank you to our staff. And come up with this, uh, in some way, it's kind of temporary. Uh, a few in the gap until, so I called it us earlier until twenty twenty-nine, knowing what points we do want to get to the end game. Uh, but it's amazing how these tiny e-scooters scoop up all this interest and so on and so on. Um, it's actually interesting that my colleague who spoke before me, talking about uh, licensing. Um, actually, I meant to ask that during the presentation. Do we have an estimate um, from maybe sources, uh, either MTO or some places? What would be appropriate number potentially of e-scooters being used now in Richmond Hill, in York Region? Do we really have any idea? What what's the size, what's the size of numbers we're dealing with? We know of the potential risk and all that. Are we dealing with two hundred in the city, two thousand or twenty thousand, or we don't know? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through through the chair to councillor Chan. The answer is I I don't know what the numbers would look like right now, other than to tell you, we're seeing more and more of them. Um, so I would, I would imagine the numbers are a fairly large number and will only increase. Uh, but I don't have that information right now, but I can try to get that for you.
No, thank you. Well, um, because I'm I'm just thinking about, we spend a lot of efforts in this, this operative. Should we, is it, we are all coming with the premise to uh, maintain road safety and ensuring that's a peaceful, you know, sharing the use of the different kind of um, devices or vehicles in this sense. Uh, and I appreciate my colleague talking about potential licensing. Then at least you have a better sense, what's quantum, what's the number of dealing with, right? And um, so I know it's hard to get, but it seems to me it's mostly entered do-do kind of thing. Oh, I observe in this hour, in this block, twenty of this scoop pass, whatever. But we, at some point in time, maybe not just Richmond Hill, maybe, I don't know, uh, others, um, suppliers or educators like Mr. Ahmed or some other places like CAA or MTO might be able to help, uh, because we need to have a better handle, just other than, oh, yeah, it's increasing. By how much? Compared to what? I mean, and comparing specifically, all our competent professional staff. I mean, and comparing specifically, all our competent professional staff time they put into it to try to make it something that fit into its works in Richmond Hill. And that brings me back to the same question I raised in the presentation. I'm still not convinced that, personally speaking, that our proposed policy here is to include the, actually, it's on page eight document, paved but off-road multi-use trails. We are proposing Richmond here in the paper to allow it. Whereas in the city of Markham, just next door, they don't allow it. So I I fail to understand the logic. I I I presume the city of Markham must have staff, council, look at that and decided not to allow it. So I'm not personally convinced at this point in time, why would our policy take, if I may say so, a high risk that to 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 allow for it? That's something maybe in between now and next week. When it comes back, we could have other conversation in between. But I I fail to see, why would we even propose it? If it's other adjacent municipalities, presumably look at it, pose in front, allow for it. The other thing is that there seems to be quite a bit of discrepancy or inconsistency here. Nothing of our making. Like the Ontario exception, again on page eight, exception is cyclists age ten or younger. Ours is providing cyclists age fourteen years or under. That may be something need to be, uh, uh, look at. I I know, I appreciate pointing out the differences. But then, is that any particular challenges that bring forward to us? It's almost like the question from, how do you know speeding? How can you tell whether the 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 young person is ten, twelve, fourteen, or sixteen? So those are the kind of challenges. And no doubt, we need a robust public education campaign, no doubt about that. I look forward to seeing what the rest amendment will be. But I just want to mention, I have a concern about that multi-use trail allowing for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you need any answers from our staff? Deputy Chair, Deputy Mayor? Oh, okay. Next, you're the Counselor, Jokipalo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just just wanted to jump in at this point to say, to 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 mention to other members of council that these agenda items are published weekly in advance and that a lot of these questions can be asked during the time before the meeting. We we've had, I I bring it up on this issue because we've had extensive discussions. Our staff's available. If you have questions, when you, when you add question and answer, your five minutes can become ten or fifteen minutes and times nine on on an issue when we have other delegations and other other issues. It's just, it's important to get to really get, get your questions answered before the meeting. And I understand sometimes that a presentation will provoke a question. And that's all understandable. And everyone's within their rights to use their time, however they see fit. But let's, let's try to ask, ask questions that can be asked before the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, I'm really, I'm the last one to answer questions. Great. And let's go to the second round, okay? So my question is very simple, adding the exception process here as well. Just echoing, if you drive in the early morning or afternoon during the rush hour to school area, especially for the high school. I think Mayor mentioned Richmond High, Green School, Richmond High School, St. Teresa, and all the nearby schools as well. In the rush hour, there's very challenge even for walk on the street. I'm now seeing riding bicycles. Walking on the street is very difficult because too many cars. So for the kids riding to the bicycles to the school, whenever he scooter or the bicycles, is there any exception that the gentleman said? Five hundred meters near the square should be allowed. If kids riding bicycle on the street, main street, when they reach the school, meeting cars on the street, it's very challenging and dangerous for kids riding combined with those cars. So my maybe recommendations here or tips here is talking, we're gonna talk with Mayor. So here, brand a separate amendment. Squares should be excluded during certain hours, day or after, because otherwise it's gonna be very, very challenging also distance. I believe maybe five hundred to six hundred, even one kilometer will be a lot. Otherwise, you know, Richmond High School, at least one kilometer. Because as long you drive into high school, definitely, wow, the car pack up. So there's no way they drive with, compete with with the car. Another one is a time minor, winter. I know majority time pedestrian will not walk on sidewalk during winter time because slippery, very dangerous as well. Someone still walking dog, etc. For the, for the kids during the winter time, they cannot riding the bicycle on the main road. It's so slippery, so dangerous. If the sidewalk or side curb has, has, has water, the ice, oh, not water, snows and ice, there's no way they can ride bicycles. So during that time being, it's possible, we can set up some exceptions, allow those kids, high school students eighteen years underneath, allow them to ride bicycles. No one gonna drive crazy, I drive crazy, so winter, no slippery. Everyone pay attention, right? So that's my second recommendation to the exception process. Thank you. I don't have any further for my side. Let's go to the round two. Mayor West?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a little bit quickly, just one more comment. So I've just been following on my first round. You know, Regional Counselor DePaula did mention to me that there is actually an alternative route to get from where I was going. The only problem is it's considerably longer and I'm not quite as young as I used to be. So, you know, and and I mean, that's not, I mean, I'm joking, but, well, actually, I'm not joking. But but the, but the thing is that that's a barrier to to somebody that's that's using micro mobility, particularly, you know, a human-powered device. So I think one response to that, which is just a comment, I really, it would be so great if there were some way that we could electronically publish the best, like, or facilitate the publishing of the best route to get from where you are to where you want to go. I know, like, Apple Maps does that, but I don't know how accurate they are. Like, what is the best route to to avoid high-traffic areas if you're using any sorts of these devices? So that's something that maybe we could consider because that would be very helpful for any user to be able to to figure out how how to get from A to B. But in terms of the amendment, so what I would like, I, so in my experience, and and I, this is a hypothesis, I may be incorrect on some of my details and and that's why I want the staff to study this. But when I was driving, when I have been driving along regional roads, I noticed that there sidewalks along regional roads in many, many cases are not well-used by pedestrians. And, you know, it's not to say that there are no pedestrians using it and clearly pedestrians take precedence on sidewalks. There's no question about that. But this infrastructure that we have is maybe not being, like, it's not like there's a traffic jam of pedestrians using those, those particular sidewalks. And I'm only talking about sidewalks on regional roads like Elgin Mills, for example. So I'm wondering if we could look at the possibility of making, perhaps adding some paved lanes beside sidewalks, which I realize have a cost and they will add to our capital, you know, requests and so on, which, you know, I get that there's a cost to that. But where we could find pieces of pavement that we could use, and then there may be in certain routes, areas where we could put a piece of pavement in for long stretches and it'll be fine. But then there may be places where there's pinch points where they, we would have to share a sidewalk for a short distance. So I'm wondering if through the trail study, because that's coming next, if we could ask staff to look at the best way to leverage boulevard facilities on regional roads and report back during the trail study, including additional infrastructure and/or implementing safe, shared facility protocols. So is that, that's something, I I was talking to Commissioner Massaro about this and that's kind of captures what we were talking about, I think, Commissioner. Is that, is that correct or have I missed some details?
Through the Chair to the Mayor. Thank you. And no, that is, that is correct. There is a variety of different ways that the existing facility can be leveraged through either placing an additional facility adjacent to it or in some cases, as seen in other municipalities, they'll remove the existing one and a half meter concrete wide sidewalk and replace it with a three meter multi-use path. But we want to make sure when we do any of this or the city undertakes this work, that it's not a path to nowhere. It has, there has to be connectivity, which means it, there has to be a plan to understand where are the primary heavily-used routes, whether it's predominantly on regional roads and things of that nature, recognizing that currently the municipality owns all of the sidewalk infrastructure for the most part on regional roads. So there's absolutely a partnership that has to, you know, be undertaken with the region. So it would absolutely have to be planned and then slowly implemented over the life of, you know, the ten-year capital plan. As seen as, you know, the Leslie Lake to Lake Route as an example. So some other municipalities are a little bit further advanced than this. They are larger municipalities, can't speak so much for the city of Markham, but I know I've seen it in the city of Onwer. The region, through some of their reconstruction work, has on their own added the additional facility. So it is possible where space exists.
Okay, and that's exactly what I'm looking to do. So, so I mean, ideally, it's best to have all these different micro mobility methods separated. That's the best solution. But realistically and from a budget perspective, there may be places where we do need to share. And that's where I think the micro mobility strategy comes in. But what I'm trying to achieve here by, you know, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I know everything about this and and, you know, and even the demand for certain routes. But if there are east-west routes, in my opinion, in Richmond Hill are less available than north-south routes. And particularly east-west regional roads, I mean, we may not be able to do every single one of them. That just may not be possible. But I think what we need to do is look at, how can we incorporate boulevard areas to be able to facilitate more of this micro mobility? So just to finish off, Mr. Clerk, if your fingers are ready at the keyboard, I can maybe give, suggest some wording and then you can do what you do as a clerk. But I'd like to direct staff to further explore how we may be able to best leverage boulevard areas on regional roads and report back during the trail study, including adding additional infrastructure and/or implementing safe, shared mobility facilities. And if you've kept up with that, that means you took grade nine typing. I did not. So you are at an advantage.
Thank you. Through the Chair, I will put this on the screen. I hope I have captured the Mayor's intent. That's great.
Okay. So I, okay, that's true. So I believe who can, the Mayor put the flash, should we ask more or Mayor's more? Okay, so let's discuss. Anyone has any question regarding to the amendment on the screen? No one? Okay, all in favor? Yeah, the man passed. Okay, yeah, back the main motion has been made. So Mayor finished the round two? Okay, next one, Counselor Thompson for the round two.
Uh, thank you very much. I'm cognizant of time here, so I'm not sure if we wanted to, let me just defer to the clerk for one second and.
Thank you. Through the Chair, it would certainly be staff's recommendation that following the completion of this item, we would take the normal lunch break because we've been meeting for two and a half hours or more and that would be our recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Please continue.
Please continue. You want me to continue? Okay, I thought, okay. Yeah, this is, it's a very unique situation because what we have here is really, it's the safety side of things that we're looking at. We're, micro mobility is something that has to work with a variety of different users in a variety of different places. So it's not like, you know, we're just talking about on a road or on a sidewalk or on the trails. We're talking about all of them. So this is, this is a very awkward and and difficult position to be, for the municipalities to be put in, in my opinion. However, having said that, and I'm, I'm gonna come back to what I mentioned earlier, but, you know, there is the pleasure craft operator card that, you know, and and so I guess my question is, is that something that the municipality would actually have the authority to do? Like, if we wanted to develop our education plan and say that, you know, you need to take a three-to-five-hour course, just similar to what they do with the PCOC, and get a card, is that something that we have the authority or ability to do?
Through the Chair to Counselor Thompson, I'm gonna start by responding to that in a roundabout way. It was highlighted before, your example is a good one, what the province has done as it relates to boating, right? And it's been highlighted through various parts of the discussion this morning that in absence of some greater framework from the province, this is what we have to work with today. And this is why we're recommending trying to do something in the absence of nothing because we are very well aware that this is something that is increasing in use. So we need to find some regulation within our authority to do that. So Commissioner Steele has also, you know, highlighted that, you know, going down this path to do all this. I don't believe that the city of Richmond Hill is prepared to take on that volume of an exercise and that that would be feasible. And I think because this is an evolution, that hopefully the province gets there. We can certainly with our partners, other municipalities within York Region, leveraging York Region to advocate. And council as well has opportunities to leverage the province to create a framework that then becomes easier for all the municipalities to follow. But that just doesn't currently exist today. So we have what we have to work with.
Right, and and I appreciate that and I, and I agree wholeheartedly. And I, yes, we definitely need to be advocating the province in this regard. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that. I think that this is where we
I'm gonna leave it at that. I think that this is where we need to get to at some point. I appreciate everything that you've put together to this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Thompson. Next one, Counselor Liu.
Thank you very much. I know the time is, the clock is running. I just wanted to say that, you know, there is no way any one of us here is trying to embarrass staff and ask tough questions to put you on the tough spot, and I'm sure staff understand that. This is not the intent, and I think the whole purpose of the council meeting and the council meeting is for wholesome public discussion, and, you know, questions popped up. And we can always talk offline, we can always talk beforehand, but, you know, if we don't have this forum, I don't know I have the same thoughts with Counselor Thompson. And I think that, you know, this is all fair, you know, with all the respect, you know, I disagree with Regional Counselor Joe DePaulo, and I take offense to that. And I appreciate all the pre-meetings and stuff, but, you know, just like Mayor's motion, amendment, to be, to be exact, you know? Does that mean that he could, he should have talked to staff beforehand and, you know, don't have to do it on the fly? No, it popped up, and, you know, this is the whole spirit of having a wholesome discussion and council meeting. So I truly hope that, you know, staff won't take it personal, so nothing to do with you, you guys doing a great job. And I just wanted to lastly add that on the education piece. I noticed that lots of micro mobility riders, they don't understand that they have the same responsibility with car drivers. They still have to stop at stop signs. Am I correct? They have to stop at stop signs, right? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through the Chair to Counselor Liu, yes, any micro mobility device that's used on a city road will still have to adhere to all the traffic and road bylaws.
Yeah, I think most importantly, not only where they can ride and where they cannot ride, but, you know, they have to follow the same rules as car drivers. I just witnessed to cyclists, you know, passing through stop signs and giving me a finger, fingers. Anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone has round two? Nope, perfect. Okay, thank you so much. So I think this time for a vote for this motion. Anyone has any objections? No? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you so much. The motion passed here, so I want to bring another one, because time matters, we have to make a pause. So lights coming back 1pm. Okay, thank you so much.